Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, April 12th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruhlhan, Laban, Ledlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vivergos, Waisine, Padilla, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, as is customary, this is Tuesday, we do have scheduled both our students to the flag, I should say. Councilmember Zine, I understand you have some young students visiting from your district. Would you like to call for one of the students to lead us in our salute to the flag?
Kirk of the Valley, please rise. Kirk of the Valley? Do we get the camera focus on Kirk of the Valley? We have Kirk of the Valley here this morning. It's in Reseda, a private school. We have the toddlers to the fifth grade, pre-kindergarten, elementary, and we have the fifth grade teacher and the fourth grade teacher, Judy Kites. Judy, where are you? Judy, wave. There's Judy. And we have Sherri Best. Sherri Best, welcome. Welcome to Los Angeles City Council.
Welcome, and if we can...
We'd like to have a student join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, here at the center. Judy, if you could pick one of the students to come forward.
We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? What's your name?
Samir.
Samir? Samir's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Samir.
Wait.
Go ahead.
Do I start? Okay. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Samir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Samir. And let that be a lesson to all the kids. If you're going to come to City Hall, we're going to put you to work. Thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approve all the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Laban seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Ms. Gruhl seconds.
And Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, let's actually hold off on general public comment, dispense with consent items, and then we'll return to public comment.
First items on the agenda, Mr. President, are items noticed for public hearing, items one through four. They are street lighting ordinances.
Okay, members, items one through four now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are opened and closed. Members wishing to call any of these items special, items one through four, seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
These ordinances carry over for a second reading. Actually, before going on to the next items, Mr. Parks has just joined us. Bring us twelve members. Let's move reconsideration on items one through four. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
They're now back before us and eligible for twelve votes. Let's reopen the roll, items one through four, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are now approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items sixteen through thirty-five. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, these items are before the City Council today, and colleagues, let me recognize that I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on items sixteen through thirty-five. Those public hearings are opened and closed. Request for specials, Mr. Weiss.
Just request that we continue item thirty-one until Friday, please.
Okay, any objection, colleagues, continuing item thirty-one, seeing none. Mr. City Attorney, are we still within our relevant timeframe?
Friday is the last day.
Okay, then without objection, item thirty-one is continued. Colleagues, items sixteen through thirty-five still before us. Any other specials?
Continue.
Any other specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll and those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items sixteen through thirty-five. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, these items are before the City Council today, and colleagues, let me recognize that I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on items sixteen through thirty-five. Those public hearings are opened and closed. Request for specials, Mr. Weiss.
Just request that we continue item thirty-one until Friday, please.
Okay, any objection, colleagues, continuing item thirty-one, seeing none. Mr. City Attorney, are we still within our relevant timeframe?
Friday is the last day.
Okay, then without objection, item thirty-one is continued. Colleagues, items sixteen through thirty-five still before us. Any other specials?
Continue.
Any other specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll and those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. The next item is thirty-six. That's called special. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Well, since we do have two soon-to-be city officials waiting, let's confirm or take up the commission nominees first and end with general public comment. Item number five, please.
Item number five is confirmation of Ron Deaton to the Board of Metropolitan Water District, and a committee report has been submitted recommending approval.
Mr. Deaton? Members, this is item number five before us. Members of the council wishing to be heard on item number five. Let's begin by hearing from the chairman of the committee, Councilmember Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas, item number five.
It's good to see you, Mr. Deaton.
Thank you.
Did you find the room okay?
It was difficult, but I finally figured out where it was.
I'm sure we have plenty of people in the hallways who could direct you if you ever need help getting here.
We can always send a work assignment to the CLA's office to assist me.
Water, water, very important issue, and you've done a lot of very important responsibilities for our great city of Los Angeles. Can you please share with the public a little bit as to why it's important that we have these appointments to be held by people who are engaged, people who are knowledgeable, people who know what they're doing, and the gravity of the situation and what we have to gain and/or lose if we're not at the table over at MWD?
Metropolitan Water District is the regional wholesaler of water for most of Southern California, and it got started in the '30s with the construction of the Colorado Aqueduct, which was paid for at that point eighty percent by the city of Los Angeles, basically as an insurance policy for the water supply for the city. As it has grown, it is the major wholesaler in Southern Cali-- it is the wholesaler in Southern California and a member of the state water project. It supplies for the city of Los Angeles and in
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, April 12th, 2005. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruhl, Han, LeBarnes, Ledlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vivergos, Waizine, Padilla, ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, as is customary, this is Tuesday, we do have scheduled both our students to the flag, I should say. Councilmember Zine, I understand you have some young students visiting from your district. Would you like to call for one of the students to lead us in our salute to the flag?
Kirk of the Valley, please rise. Kirk of the Valley? Do we get the camera focused on Kirk of the Valley? We have Kirk of the Valley here this morning. It's in Reseda, a private school. We have the toddlers to the fifth grade, pre-kindergarten, elementary, and we have the fifth grade teacher and the fourth grade teacher, Judy Kites. Judy, where are you? Judy, wave. There's Judy. And we have Sherri Best. Sherri Best, welcome. Welcome to Los Angeles City Council.
Welcome, and if we can...
We'd like to have a student join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, here at the center. Judy, if you could pick one of the students to come forward.
Samir.
Samir? Samir's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Samir.
Wait.
Go ahead.
Do I start? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Samir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Samir. And let that be a lesson to all the kids. If you're going to come to City Hall, we're going to put you to work. Thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approve all the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves and Mr. LeBarnes seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves and Ms. Gruhl seconds.
And Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, let's actually hold off on general public comment, dispense with consent items, and then we'll return to public comment.
First items on the agenda, Mr. President, are items noticed for public hearing, items one through four. They are street lighting ordinances.
Okay, members, items one through four now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are opened and closed. Members wishing to call any of these items special, items one through four. Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
These ordinances carry over for a second reading. Actually, before going on to the next items, Mr. Parks has just joined us, bringing us twelve members. Let's move reconsideration on items one through four. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
They're now back before us and eligible for twelve votes. Let's reopen the roll on items one through four. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are now approved on first reading. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items five through fifteen. Item number five is confirmation of a city official. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold both item five on the desk, and when we get to it, item thirty-six is also confirmation of a commissioner. We'll call that special as well. Colleagues, leaving items six through fifteen. Public hearings on these items have been held in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, do we have any requests for specials? Items six through fifteen. Seeing none, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items sixteen through thirty-five. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, these items are before the city council today, and colleagues, let me recognize that I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on items sixteen through thirty-five. Those public hearings are opened and closed. Request for specials, Mr. Weiss.
Just request that we continue item thirty-one until Friday, please.
Okay, any objection, colleagues, continuing item thirty-one? Seeing none. Mr. City Attorney, are we still within our relevant timeframe?
Friday is the last day.
Okay, then without objection, item thirty-one is continued. Colleagues, items sixteen through thirty-five still before us. Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. The next item is thirty-six. That's called special. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Well, since we do have two assumed-to-be city officials waiting, let's confirm or take up the commission nominees first and end with general public comment. Item number five, please.
Item number five is confirmation of Ron Deaton to the Board of Metropolitan Water District, and a committee report has been submitted recommending approval.
Members, this is item number five before us. Members of the council wishing to be heard on item number five. Let's begin by hearing from the chairman of the committee, Councilmember Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas, item number five.
It's good to see you, Mr. Deaton.
Thank you.
Did you find the room okay?
It was difficult, but I finally figured out where it was.
I'm sure we have plenty of people in the hallways who could direct you if you ever need help getting here.
We can always send a work assignment to the CLA's office to assist me.
Water, water, very important issue, and you've done a lot of very important responsibilities for our great city of Los Angeles. Can you please share with the public a little bit as to why it's important that we have these appointments to be held by people who are engaged, people who are knowledgeable, people who know what they're doing, and the gravity of the situation and what we have to gain and/or lose if we're not at the table over at MWD?
Metropolitan Water District is the regional wholesaler of water for most of Southern California, and it got started in the '30s with the construction of the Colorado Aqueduct, which was paid for at that point eighty percent by the city of Los Angeles, basically as an insurance policy for the water supply for the city. As it has grown, it is the major wholesaler in Southern — it is the wholesaler in Southern California and a member of the state water project. It supplies for the city of Los Angeles an increasingly larger supply of water when our normal source, our historic sources of the LA Aqueduct and the groundwater, et cetera, are diminishing over a period of time. So our rights and our responsibilities and how Metropolitan makes its decision on the — how much money is going to be spent, who's going to pay for it, and who gets the water is at stake. And so it is important that we be represented in that arena with people who are knowledgeable about the economics and also about the availability of water. Otherwise, our — even in the normal years, we would be in an awkward position and not having the kind of water we need.
Now, the fact of the matter is, isn't it true that anybody who uses MWD water as a municipal authority or city or county within the system, if they have a certain amount of usage or more, they get a seat at the table or more than one seat at the table?
Currently, the seat at the table is dependent upon the amount of property taxes paid over a period of time. We have — because we have the largest percentage, the city of Los Angeles has paid in property taxes, the largest amount of money that — of any agency in the district, and as a result, we have more votes. As I commented before, we paid for eighty percent of the original construction of the Colorado Aqueduct, and therefore, we had eighty percent of the votes. Over a period of time, with other people paying and other people being involved, our percentage is now roughly twenty percent.
So water, for example, first of all, water isn't free. By the time it comes out of the tap, it's not free, but we were just discussing in the Commerce Committee just a little while ago about the different prices that we pay as Angelenos per acre foot. For example, if it's water that we bring through our aqua — through the aqueduct, it's our water, and it may cost us as much as $300 per acre foot, but if we buy water from MWD, it could cost us as much as $450 per acre foot. It's still water, right? It's still just basic water, but the price is different based on where you get it and who you're getting it from.
Exactly. Actually, I — this isn't entirely true, but for the most part, the water is free. The transportation is expensive.
Well, that's what I — that's why I clarified what I said. By the time it comes out of the tap, it's not free.
Right, and we — Metropolitan pays for in their rate, as it is subsidized by the property tax, but nonetheless, their rate, it depends on the amount of money, the infrastructure to bring it from the north, and the energy costs to get it over to the hatchet fees and distribute it into Southern California on a wholesale basis. Our cost has to do with maintaining and operating the aqueduct and the groundwater in the San Fernando Valley, as well as the distribution system, and that's what the rates pay for. The water — actually, the water coming down from the LA Aqueduct produces more power, and the value of that is worth more than the — we actually are able to maintain it's a — the water doesn't cost us.
So just to clarify for Angelenos, all of our water sources, some of them are more simplistic than others, some of them we already have control over, other water we have to purchase. This water, this issue of water that we bring to Los Angeles, it's pretty complicated and it gets pretty contentious. Are there actually regions or organizations who really don't like Los Angeles because the water that starts up there might end up down here?
Well, I've always said that there's something in the north in the gene pool that anything that comes south has become a bad thing. The northern part of the state doesn't particularly want water to come into the southern part of the state, and they have expressed this in many ways, not the least of which the ballot box. In the case of — in the Met family, obviously, each person comes to that table with their own set of interests, having to do with how much they're dependent on Met for their water, how much water, other water supplies they have, and how much they're willing to pay and how much they would prefer other people to pay, like us, for their water. So the game is partially supply and partially cost, and that game gets played out on the board relative to rates and relative to increasing the water supply, et cetera, and how much that costs and who gets to pay for it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Deaton. I hope you don't mind the fact that I just used you to try to help have a dialogue so that Angelenos can appreciate how important these water issues are and how important it is that we do our job at every level to make sure that the water is clean, it's available, and it's here so that when they open up the tap, they can get it, because some places don't exactly have that opportunity, and we're fortunate to have that. Water is a big issue. It's important that we have somebody who's knowledgeable and capable at the table, and I wholly support your appointment, Mr. Deaton, and hopefully you will be able to fit it in with all of your other duties over at the Department of Water and Power. Thank you so much for volunteering for the job.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Deaton, good morning to you, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Zine.
Welcome back to Los Angeles City Hall.
Thank you very kindly.
Your former home. There was an article in today's newspaper that I was reading regarding water, and it talks about a housing boom. Thousands of new homes are planned in four major developments in northern Los Angeles County. I don't know if you saw that article or not.
No.
But it talks about major development taking place in the northern part of the county, and it gives the number, which is a number of homes, residential, that are going to be added by 2020, nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand; by 2005, six-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. The population's going to be expanding fifty percent by 2020. Has that been taken in consideration when we talk about the water coming into Los Angeles, the Metropolitan, Department of Water and Power, and all these other developments that are taking place in this region of Southern California? The Riverside-San Bernardino, seventy-one thousand additional residents being built, residential dwellings, and it seems that we're building at an incredible pace for the population. And I know that our transportation system has collapsed, and we're trying to catch up with the schools for the children. When it comes to water, which we can't manufacture, has that been taken in consideration with all of these developments that are taking place throughout this region from the board?
Actually, state law requires the agency that is approving those kinds of developments to demonstrate that they, in fact, have the water to allow those developments to go ahead. And that is, if you're representing the inland empire, or San Diego County, or Orange County, or the city of Los Angeles, that's certainly an — that's one of the issues that you have to look at, is how much water is Metropolitan on a wholesale basis is going to be able to bring into the region? How much is it going to cost? How's it going to be distributed? And that's the rub on water, and you — and that — because those numbers can be matched and then matched again and again in other parts of the Metropolitan Water District service area.
So we've had droughts in the past where we told people, "Don't water your lawn, don't wash your car," restrict the use of water with our current population. If we add thousands and thousands of people, how is that manufactured into the numbers when we've already experienced droughts, severe droughts in this region? How is that calculated when we talk about the additional developments? I'm not talking about a few hundred, I'm talking about thousands, and that doesn't include Ventura County with what they're building up in that region.
Well, I think that you look at, I mean, depending on the nature of the drought, if there was, for some reason, a drought that included the Colorado River watershed, the eastern Sierra watershed, and northern California, we'd be in a world of hurt. I think the probability of all those happening simultaneously are probably unlikely, and that's one of the things. We have plans on how to approach a drought. In the case of the Metropolitan Water District, the state law requires that the water be distributed on the basis of public safety and public health throughout the region. So there is, in a drought situation, we would get minimal water distributed everywhere and try to wholly equalize the pain. It would, depending on the nature of the drought, it could be very detrimental.
And just one final question. Colorado River, are we still receiving water from Colorado River?
From where?
Colorado River, are we still receiving water from there? I know that was cut down over the past few years.
Right, we're still at the — well, we still get at the — my recollection is about a half million acre feet a year is our rights, five-hundred-and-something, five-fifty, and we're still getting more than that, but that has to be worked out with CalFed on this whole CalFed process of how to — but we have not been diminished from our rights from the Colorado.
Okay.
It's just that we used to take a lot more.
You're obviously well-qualified for this position in addition to your other responsibilities, keeping LA's power going and the water circulating. So congratulations. You got my vote once again.
Once again.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise and thank Mr. Deen for his proactivity in dealing with these water issues. In particular, as you all know, we've been working hard with Department of Water and Power to deal with the master plan revitalization of the LA River, but that does make the question. As a city, we have to meet these federal mandates, TMDLs, cleaning of the waterways, contamination. MWD also has a role in that in their delivery of water. They have systems, they have waterways. I can't think of a better person to try to connect the two worlds, because knowing that they have different regions that they cover, and the watershed management is a regional issue, so in light of that opportunity to leverage that, do you feel MW is ready to start looking at a more creative approach in dealing with cleaning up the waterways and tackling the issue of how we change people's attitudes about their responsibilities with our storm drains and everything else that goes with that?
I think under the leadership of Ron Gastelum, they have moved ahead on a lot of the conservation and environmentally sound things, the better use of water. There is a kind of a footrace between the using some of those waters and the science of what is contaminated and what is not contaminated, and being able to clean it up sufficient for it to be used for drinking water, and our own controversy in the San Fernando Valley relative to recycled water, and that controversy continues to today. But as a region, the — at some point, we're going to have to deal with the issue of we cannot import enough water to solve our problems, and we're going to have to use the water that we are importing more than once, and in some fashion, that is going to be thrust upon us as time moves on, as Mr. Zine says, as more and more people come here, less — there is no great amount of water that's waiting to be sent to us.
The treated water, I mean, it's treated, it's drinkable, it passed the test, people won't get sick from it, but we do, for lack of a better word, dump a lot of it into our LA riverways because we're not using it. Would that be accurate?
Well, what you're talking about, the sewer, when we —
The treated.
— treated recycled water. Right now, a lot of it goes into the LA River. We have, as a department, plans to pump some of that up to other parts in the valley to be used for landscaping and other — in fact, we have plans to pump some of that water to the Valley Steam Plant and clean it sufficient to use it for cooling in the steam plant as a part of the use of that water for recycling.
But just for the record, we treat it enough where we could drink it if we chose to.
Well, it was our — it was the department's view some years ago that if we hadn't let that water settle back into the groundwater and that it mixed with the other groundwater that it would be safe drinking water. There was people who disagreed with that, some of them members of this organization here, and —
Back then.
— back then, and those permits currently have expired, and we would not be able to do that. But I think, as I was saying, as a society in Southern California, we're going to have to revisit how we're going to do recycling, not only of stormwater and — but also of sewer water as well in some fashion, and that day will come, and we'll be able to treat it in such a fashion that that will be a cheaper alternative than trying to convert saltwater, I think.
Great, and as we embark on our futures now for the river process, we're trying to get people more aware of, we actually have an element, an amenity, a natural feature that we could be much more opportunistic with at many levels. I just want to thank you for your hard work in that realm and looking forward to working with you on MWD as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. LeBarnes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Deen. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. LeBarnes.
I just paid — you know what yesterday was? It was the last day to pay the tax bill. They get extra day because of the weekend, but the Metropolitan Water District assessment for the home that Bridget and I own is $21.02, which is a great investment. It's a great investment that reaches all the way through the Colorado Aqueduct to the state aqueduct, et cetera. So I just wanted to note that we do pay a contribution as city residents to the importance of water, and I think the tail of water, all water is recycled. The water that was — came out of the sky this last fall probably came out of the sky many times before. So water education is so important, and I know you're at the Department of Water and Power now, but the Metropolitan Water Authority did a water — MWD, Metropolitan Water District, did a great public education campaign, and I think if you could help spread that word when you get a chance, so people understand water, how to conserve it, but also how to use it, where it comes from, and that it's all recycled, if you could say that in one sense. Is there anything we need to do more of?
Yes, I think we need to do more education. I think we also need to talk about the way we landscape, be more drought-resistant type plants, better on — as a city as a whole, I think the — one of the thrust of the Propo Bond measure was to take the water and divert it to holding areas and let it percolate back into the groundwater. There's a — but also just better use of water. I think that we have been lulled into that if you turn on the switch, the power will be there, if you turn on the tap, the water will be there, and no understanding, or if you flush the toilet, it's going to be fine. And no really comprehension of the amount of investment and the planning that has to be done to ensure that happens over a long period of time, and that education process, I think we have to be more active in the schools and more active in the way we let people know. We're very inclined to just suck it up and decide how to do it and not let anybody know, but do it, just try to do our job, and I think it's going to be much more complicated in the future to do that.
Well, I think education, and I also know another, under Mr. Gastelum's tenure over there at MWD, they had the number one water. I think they had a contest, you know, like when they used to have contests of what was the best water, and MWD got the best water. So I want to challenge you to make sure that DWP gets right up there, too.
Oh, he fixed it.
He fixed it, okay. Thank you very much. And last question, just to know, how many do we know people buy plastic bottled water? Okay, a lot of times people buy it, it's better than soda to drink water. What percentage of water comes from plastic? Do you know that at all?
No.
Okay.
Interesting enough, just for the record, the water you drink out of a tap is actually regulated and monitored as to what's in it and what isn't. That doesn't apply to a lot of the drinking water that you get in —
Right.
— plastic containers.
Plastic, thank you, Mr. President. Lastly, I think you should bottle LADWP water and sell it because it's good water. Thank you very much. Keep that water flowing from Colorado and from the north.
Thank you, Mr. LeBarnes. Other members of the council wishing to speak on item number five? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations, Mr. Deen.
Thank you very much.
You get extra work.
I know, Mr. Zine, you just didn't quite make it.
Next item, please.
Next item is item number thirty-six, and that's confirmation of Dr. Sonia Molina to the LA County Health Facilities Authority Commission Arts Parks Committee waived consideration.
If Dr. Molina will come forward, colleagues, this is a consideration of a reappointment of Dr. Molina. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, very familiar with Dr. Molina's work, not just as a professional, but also her community work through SALEF and her work with Salvadorian Leadership and Education Fund, and encourage everybody to very heartily support this appointment. It's a wise appointment, it's a wise reappointment, and want to thank you for your work in offering yourself forward to serve the people of Los Angeles once again. And if there's anything that you'd like to add, maybe afford you the opportunity to say that now.
Yes, I wanted to just thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve my community, and also I feel very honored that I've been entrusted this job, and I look forward to another year of exciting work. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
I just wanted to rise and also thank you. You've been so supportive, especially the Salvadorian community and all the events that you bring together, all the services, your vigilance over the nonprofits, to make sure that people that don't have the means to always have the services that typically are available to most people. You've been a very strong supporter of those types of efforts, and I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank you of all your hard work that you do behind the scenes. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you for your help.
Mr. Labons.
Thank you very much, members of Dr. Molina. Thank you, and I guess it is advocating, it is important. At one time, years ago, the city had its own health department. Now the county operates it. This particular commission helps us look to what the city's interests are and the needs with the various facilities throughout the city and also open to all county residents. So I thank you and appreciate your work and always know that all of us are here to help you in any way possible. Good health is the answer, and good early health is the answer to all issues related to a good lifestyle. So thank you, Dr. Molina.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Other members of the council wishing to be heard. Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you again for your service to the city. Fourth with on both items five and 36, please. Madam Clerk, next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And the council calls forward Armando Herman under general public comment.
Honorable council members, thank you for having us here this morning. My neighbors and I, who are from an organization called BHNO, have come again to bring to your attention the problem with gangs. I'm sure President Padilla can relate to the situation because he had a related incident in his neighborhood. But today in Boyle Heights and throughout Los Angeles, we are all affected by gang and graffiti. And how does it bother any of us when we don't look at the problem from a rural observational point of how it's destroying our communities and destroying people's lives? Do you know we are dealing with a serious increase in graffiti? Right now, it goes far beyond taking a few dollars worth of paint and the time it takes to take graffiti off the wall. It happens when local government sleeps or becomes lax to the threats from the rise of gangs. It is clear that we must step up our efforts on every possible front to reduce gang activity. City ordinance 165152 has not been applied in our city, and it must be enforced. The Department of Building and Safety has refused, I say refused, to take any action with this form of super graphic graffiti art. And I'm sad to say, Councilman Villarogosa, since you're not here, the problem continues in Boyle Heights. Just a block from your field office, someone was killed due to tagging or graffiti art by another gang member, and you showed no concern to that. All along, I've been sending you certified letters that have documented the problem, and I've asked for your attention on this. So has the organization BHNO to meet with you, to discuss this issue, which you've stepped away. So today, I ask that this council please motion on this agenda and the agenda to come to bring out this problem of gang graffiti. We must together work to collaborate, to bring something to a closure, to eliminate the problem. Mr. Reyes and Ms. Gruel and their act on the committee with AdHoc, you've been slow in a response. We must take stronger action. Mr. Reyes, please, you heard, you heard the sayings of those young children and those men that were there talking to you. They're being very real, and so were you. I liked your point. And the same for Mr. Parks. There's been ongoing just havoc in our neighborhoods. We must put an end to it. We must put a stop to it. My neighbors here, they're sad to say, and they're here to support me. They see the problem. So once again, I invite you and any one of you to 2201 East First Street, Los Angeles, California, 90033, or telephone 309-817-5213 area code. And let us know if you're, you're all welcome to come. Sit down so we can come together with this issue. And all I ask is, please, address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
The excuses on the desk. Council President Padilla requests to be excused Friday, May 13th for city business. That meets council policy.
That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Friday, April 29th for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Perry is excused.
Councilmember Villarogosa requests to be excused Friday, April 15th to leave at 11:30, and Wednesday, April 27th to leave at 12:30, and Tuesday, May 3rd. Those are all for personal business, and they all meet council policy.
Mr. Villarogosa is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, May 13th to leave at 11:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
And Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused April 20th and 27th to leave at 11:45 for city business. Those both meet council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a brief moment, introduce a guest we have in our chamber, is Senor Luis Perez. He is the former mayor of San Miguel de Epehan, Bichocan, Mexico. Bienvenido, senor, porque gozan los días de este día.
Ms. Spickowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, would like to introduce a group of students who are visiting us from our neighboring city, the city of Santa Monica. They're from PS number one. They're the third and fourth grade class. They're here with their teachers, Leigh Anne and Allison. Would you please rise and let the council see you and welcome you to our chambers? Thank you.
Other announcements, colleagues. Colleagues, other announcements? If not, I do have one. Mr. Zine, your button is pressed. Did you wish to be?
It was about something else. Miss, you got it.
Okay. Colleagues, as many of you know, today's a big day in the city of Los Angeles. One of our rituals of springtime, it's Dodgers opening day. As you know, it's not the season opening or opener for the Dodgers. They open the season on the road in San Francisco, but they come home for the home opener with a record of four and two and a lot of excitement and momentum in their 2005 season. Other final announcements, colleagues, before we go to adjourning motions. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like to adjourn in memory of Ana Cleto Lopez Tapia, the father
But Ms. Perry, we're not adjourning tributes yet, announcements right now. Adjourning tributes, please rise for adjourning motions. If ever in the audience would please rise. Ms. Perry.
Pretty good. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like to adjourn in memory of Ana Cleto Lopez Tapia, the father of a longtime constituent and colleague, Fortunato Tapia, who works for the Los Angeles Unified School District. Mr. Tapia was born June 27, 1928, in San Jose, California. His parents were Mexican immigrants working in San Jose. Unable to make ends meet, they returned to Mexico while Ana Cleto was still young. Ana Cleto returned to California as an adult and worked as a machinist and later as a mechanic, often fixing cars for people in great need who could pay him with only an IOU. He met his wife Isabel, who lived in a neighboring unit in an apartment building in South Los Angeles. After their marriage, Isabel worked as a seamstress until she gave birth to a son, Fortunato Tapia, and decided to stay home with the baby. Ana Cleto believes strongly in education as a means to breaking the cycle of poverty, and both parents made great sacrifices to send their son to parochial schools. His determination to give a better life to his son seems to have paid off. Fortunato was inducted into the Hispanic Scholarship Fund Hall of Fame in 2002 and currently works with the community in building new schools throughout South and East Los Angeles. Mr. Tapia died early in the morning of Friday, April 8, 2005, and he is survived by his wife Isabel, their son Fortunato, and his five sisters, Petra, Eva, Rosario, Benita, and Ramona. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Labons.
Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Amelia Nader, who recently passed away. She was born in Seattle, Washington, was the youngest of five children as her family moved here to Southern California when she was 10 years old. By the age of 14, Amelia found work at the Maxwell House Coffee to support her ailing and aging parents who were both unable to work. She later went to work for many supermarkets and became a manager at the Hughes Delicatessen's. She was a very loyal and proud member of her union, the Retail Clerk 660. And Amelia and her husband Sam were among the founding members of St. Michael's Orthodox Church in Van Nuys. She's survived by her husband Samuel, her daughters Miriam and Deanna. Ask that we adjourn in memory of Amelia Nader. And also, members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Charles H. Foster, Chuck Foster, who was born in Illinois, attended schools in the Evanson, Indiana area, and was a very close and dear friend of Civil Brand. After 40 years of work as an accountant and auditor for the Richfield Oil Company, then Arco, then finally British Petroleum, he retired. He was a partner with our dear Ron Ingram. Ron Ingram and he were partners for 48 years. Chuck Foster, let's adjourn in his memory as well.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. Colleagues, other tributes? If not, then I'd ask that this council adjourn in memory of Alonso Morqueco, who was a victim of a tragic incident in my district over the week, and I think many of you are familiar with the story and the case. Thirty-year-old resident of Pocoyamo, hardworking guy, family man, immigrant from Mexico who had just become a citizen last year. He leaves behind a wife, two children, and of course, his parents and extended family. Ask that we adjourn in his memory. All members. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
You are watching LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.